Let's call this February 19th meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to Order. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on a topic that hasn't had a hearing or is not yet for a hearing? Seeing none, we'll move right into Agenda Item Two, the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan Deliberation. And before we hear from staff, we just, as you all know, we have a lot of items to try to bundle up and make recommendations to the City Council for, and appreciate those of you who collected your thoughts and emailed them out to the rest of us so that we can be thinking about them. I know Gabe, I think we'll hear a response to all of those. But as we proceed forward to try to do this efficiently and yet make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to put in their input, what I would ask is that if there are recommendations that we feel strongly about that the Planning Commission needs to act on, please bring that as succinctly, as tightly as you can in the form of, I think motions will be making, a number of those as we have in the past, straw votes, so that by the time we get, when do we hear this again, March 5th?
Fourth.
Fourth. That's when we'll take final action. But what we'll try to do today, John, just to catch you up, is towards the end, see where everybody is on this whole bundle of actions that we're considering, the plan amendments, the code changes, the refinement plan adoptions and so forth. And what I was explaining, John, if there are recommendations that any one of us believes needs Planning Commission action to go forward, try to encapsulate that as tightly as you can in a motion that we would want to have carried forward. Fair enough? Okay. Any general thoughts before we get into substantive deliberations here from any of the Planning Commission members?
In some cases, I've made some comments on the code language because it wasn't clear. So I just wanted to note that, you know, those are more like wording issues.
Recommendations to staff perhaps rather than to the City Council?
Or places where drawing doesn't match the text.
Okay. Well, the-
I just want to point it out, there's two categories of issues. One is, you know, where you have some sort of substantive issue and a lot of times it's just a place where I think the code language-
Yeah, I noticed Rick in his comment had one about depth versus width, and so I think that's a good point, Steve. If there are those kinds of minor tweaks, we'll leave those with Gabe and you can take them from there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I assume there will be some themes in terms of, you know, relatively minor details that we might carry forward in our recommendation and those media policy issues or questions that you might want to formally take action on as a group. But we'll do our best to capture all of that and sort it as we go forward.
Yep. It's that, again, that higher level reaction to the ordinance and the metro plan amendments. So, any other comments from anybody? Okay, then what we asked Gabe to do is just take that collection of questions and concerns that have been submitted. And John, I didn't see anything from you. And we received another thing from Rick Duncan this morning, kind of late, but I fired that out to you as soon as I picked it up, so you should all have that as well. So Gabe, if you would, go ahead and start with the written comments and take it from there.
Sure. And just for the record, I would note that we did receive testimony in the open record period following the hearing on the 5th. We also got some rebuttal comments from the applicant last Friday, and I posted that. Hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to review that. I do think that those comments helped to respond to much of the concerns that were raised and even some of those that commissioners pointed out leading into today's meeting. So, and if anyone needs it, we do have an updated copy, a full copy of the record. It's paginated. There's a binder down there as well as this end of the table. If you need to reference anything, we can take the time to look through that if need be. But to start, I think Commissioner Lettich, your comments and concerns were the first in the order that we got, so I'll start there. And you pointed out some concerns about the testimony from Ward Beck, and his testimony primarily focused on flexibility in regards to the street standards and the layout of the proposed streets and also building heights. And I think to start, I'd just point out the code diagram that shows the street layout and the typology. And again, here, I think some of the, you know, the fundamental elements, you can see here the arc along the river, the connection between 5th and 8th. There are some secondary streets here which are perhaps a little less rigid in terms of the code requirements, but they really, I think, the layout attempts to respond to existing site constraints following utilities and easements where possible and really helping to frame the blocks for redevelopment. And I think as the applicant points out in their rebuttal, and we've noted before, the standards for street location and the particular designs are subject to what we call a design review process. So, the way it's proposed, there is flexibility built into the code. It elevates the requirement to a Type II Planning Director decision, but in looking at any proposal like that that might adjust the street locations, perhaps only a few feet here or there, or potentially to add a new street or relocate one more significantly, what we would look at are a combination of criteria. And the proposed code lays this out, but there's really two components to it. One is the existing downtown adjustment review criteria, and the other is the, are the proposed policies in the special area plan. And I can take you to those. I don't have a slide showing those. It's a lot of text, but really the goal is, as we mentioned before, to try to achieve an equal to or better than result, to really go back to the policy framework and the plan and make sure that the vision can still be carried out when we look at any sort of alternative design there.
And Type II is Planning Director approval?
That's correct.
With public notice?
There is a public notice. There's a written decision and an opportunity for appeal through that process. And we'd issue a written decision that essentially creates findings to determine, well, you know, did it comply with the policy direction and would it need to be conditioned in any way to make sure that it does?
And appeals to hearings official?
That is correct. So in terms of the building heights, I also pulled up the diagram here from the code which shows each of the sort of quote areas, and each letter designation here represents a different height standard. There are diagrams for each one of these areas in the code, and, but the testimony from Ward Beck was particularly concerned about Area B here west of the viaduct. And as the testimony notes and the applicant's rebuttal also responds to, this area is within what's known as the Skinner Butte Height Limitation Area. And this is a set of code that's been in place for many years to protect the views of the Butte. And essentially, it limits heights to roughly 500 feet above sea level, and so, of course, it depends on the exact elevation of the site, but it's variable, but it goes up to roughly 80 feet. And so here, they've matched the code standard for building height at 78 feet to the exact elevation of the property to be consistent with that. And they responded in rebuttal that they feel it's important not to vary from that existing code requirement and protection of the views. I would note also that the height standards in general are not subject to design review or flexibility under that process, and that's intentional. You know, they looked, as I understand it, very closely at the different height limitations for each of these areas. They're responding to views of the Butte, and in Area C and toward the river, they're really, they're stepping up as you move back from the river, and in Area D, you have a height limit of 120 feet. So it's really trying to focus the tallest buildings toward the center of the site and respect its sort of surroundings and sort of the fabric of the existing code provisions in the area.
I was going to quiz you on why 78 feet, because I read in there that the elevation, average elevation of the ground is 442 or-
422.
422.
Yeah.
Tap it to 500 feet.
Yeah, and you add them together and get to the 500.
It is. Now, I'll point out one exception to the rule in terms of flexibility under a high standards, and this really, I think, is a general rule under our code where if an applicant proposes a voluntary PUD process, they can request and propose a different height limit, but then they're subject to findings under the purpose statements and really undertaking a fairly robust public process to sort of ask the question and get permission if they proposed an alternative. And again, through that process, we'd also be looking at the policy framework from the plan itself to determine whether it's appropriate, so.
So, and a PUD is a Type III?
That's correct. It would involve a public hearing automatically as part of the process, and the decision-maker at the first level would be the hearings official.
And that would be appealed to Planning Commission if it was appealed?
That's right. If it were to be appealed, it would come before the Planning Commission as a final decision.
John, did you have a question?
I'm not sure exactly when it's appropriate to ask a question.
Well, we're in it.
Yeah.
I would remind everybody to speak into the mic. John?
At some, yeah, at some time possibly you can address, since we're talking building heights, I do have a concern on the minimums because no matter where you are, whether you're in B, C, or D or wherever, they all seem to say a minimum of three stories with 50% being one. And my concern is that everybody might build to the minimum when we're looking at something that's density. So I'm a little concerned with the minimums being so minimum. I just want that mentioned.
Well, I'd have to look closer at the diagrams, but I do understand that there are core areas particularly involving the overlays along the main street there that do have minimums in terms of building height and also building in a residential density requirement. Is there a particular-
All of them.
All of them.
Standard B, standard C, standard D, they all say a minimum of three stories with 50% of the lot being one story. And I'm just saying, potentially, everyone could build to the minimum. And I thought this was more about increasing density and addressing those goals.
One correction, that applies to everything except for that CL zone.
For the, and also where the restaurants, yeah.
Everything but the CLs.
Yeah, I understand.
Lower minimum.
Yeah, that goes to Rick Duncan's comment about getting from point A to point Z. From my perspective, this kind of allows for that. I mean, I have been involved in other planning efforts similar to this where the densities and the height requirements were established, in my opinion, extremely high, and getting from point A reality to that endpoint was going to take a whole lot of effort to do, and it just did not seem plausible from either an economic analysis or financial analysis. I think this is kind of the interim possibility, and it may be that first you get just three-story buildings, but it becomes an evolutionary process, at least in my mind.
And I think, I mean, it really comes down to that question of balance. You know, we've looked at this issue of requiring minimums in terms of a number of stories in other areas, and in some cases, that's been viewed as too rigid to require, you know, as many as two or three stories to begin with. Starting from scratch, you know, in terms of the existing code provisions where there is no minimum, you know, this is a step in the direction of really trying to honor the vision that was created through the process and create a, I guess, critical mass of density and the kind of, the form of development along the street to really help develop that streetscape in the way that they propose.
Current headquarters, E-Web headquarters, two stories?
No, now it's four.
Four, okay.
Except for the north building.
Yeah, okay.
So, moving on then into some of the other testimony we received, there was concern about, and some of the testimony urged that the Planning Commission only consider allowing native plantings within the area between the riverfront street and the river. And I think it's important to reflect back on some of the referral comments we got from Parks and Open Space staff and really, again, that balancing act of looking at, trying to create a, you know, an active urban riverfront park and at the same time enable some enhancements. And the way I understand the code provisions is that they, if you look here at this diagram, the proposed enhancement area right along the river's edge would require all native plantings. They're to be selected from the city's approved Goal V plants list or a native plants list that was also, that was created through this process specific to the site. And the area of the riverfront park, the darker green color there that expands landward toward the river, the code allows a combination of, well, in the case of trees, they all need to be native and selected from the plants list. And then there, I believe it's 80% of shrubs and 60% of ground covers would be required to be native. The concern was that they wanted to allow for, and the maintenance concerns and, you know, and other long-term, I think, viability questions of functionality of the park were really a concern that Parks and Open Space staff expressed and the need to have some flexibility in the future design. Ornamentals and other things might be considered appropriate or, you know, certain landscaping for gathering spaces. And so that input is really incorporated into the code, and it still requires a majority of native plant species.
Yeah, I was able to find that in Exhibit B, page 29. It's Code Section 9.3185. It spells it out in great detail. Talks about removal of invasive species and really goes into the discussion and the requirements for native plantings.
And just as a reminder, one of the requirements of the code is that any park development will require design review approval. It's not a question of an alternative design for private development, but really making sure that there's a public process, you know, and a future opportunity to look more closely at the design when that comes forward, so. I think one of the bigger themes and issues to walk through today is expressed in the testimony about Goal V requirements or Goal 15 requirements as they relate to protections along the river. And in this case, I thought that the applicant's site plan, and I know it's a little difficult to see at this scale, but we have, we have these in your binders as part of the applicant's plan set. We also have oversized copies. But basically, this is their regulatory plan, Sheet R1, and what you'll see is it shows the Goal V, what would be the Goal V Water Resource Overlay setback, which is set at 100 feet from top of bank, essentially all along the Willamette River. But in those Goal V provisions that were adopted back in 2005, there was an exception established for existing, what they call prior developed areas. So paved areas and existing buildings are essentially exempt from the footprint of that setback where they existed prior to the code at the time in 2005. And so, I mean, this was, as I recall, one of the, one of the sites that was even contemplated and thought about during discussion about that exemption. And really, we've known going into this process for some time that these paved areas, which you see in white here, it's cross-hatched on the, on the plan, those are, those are prior developed area under the code, and this diagram helps to show that. The darker color right along the river's edge is the resource area, basically below the top of bank, and then the lighter color is the edge of what would be not exempt and subject to the Water Resource Overlay regulations. So it is subject to Goal V requirements, but a good portion of what would be in the setback is exempt.
Sure. So, in the overall scheme of things, are there any areas that are either currently paved or gravelled that would actually be vegetated as opposed to this plan?
Yes, and I think that's an important point is that if you look to other materials in the applicant's proposal, they're essentially expanding the area that would be both protected and enhanced along the river's edge. And so their proposal for the riverfront park is a combination of things, and I think the next point in the testimony about Goal 15 and the Willamette Greenway is an important part of that. I mean, as you've experienced with the Good Pasture Pewee and some other recent experiences, there's a distinction under the statewide planning goals and the administrative rules between what they call the Goal V, or sorry, the Willamette Greenway boundary and the Willamette Greenway setback. And so this, the majority of this site is within the Willamette Greenway boundary, has been for a long time. Basically, everything toward the river from the railroad tracks and east of the viaduct is in the Greenway. And so it responds to that testimony, I mean, the existing boundary encompasses the site. I know the testimony from Pat Johnson mentioned, referenced to the 150 feet on either side of the river, and that's really guidance to jurisdictions about where to establish the boundary to begin with. So we know the site's subject to Willamette Greenway permit requirements. And the question then is, under the criteria is, what would be an adequate setback? Part of the criteria require an applicant to establish that adequate setback. And bouncing back here, you can see what this code diagram does is essentially set up a new Willamette Greenway setback at, you know, it varies, it follows the existing buildings, but it's at about 100 feet. And what it does is creates a, some separation from new structures, between new structures and the river. It would still allow for certain park uses, perhaps things like a bathroom or a gazebo or something like that, picnic shelter perhaps, that those would be considered water-related or water-dependent uses as part of the park. But all the mixed-use private development on these redevelopment parcels would be landward from that setback. And so we're incorporating that new setback on this particular site as part of the proposal. And again, that's, as to your question, John, it's part of the layering back of additional protections on the river's edge.
John, just on page 61 of the applicant's final submittal there in the findings, they state that pursuant to redevelopment, the proposal will create approximately 3.43 acres of new landscape and open space area and will increase the overall site coverage of said areas by 12%.
It was somewhat a rhetorical question.
Oh, well. Okay. Well, and I guess I just wanted-
Sorry.
And I guess to Gabe, so the Willamette Greenway setback line was established, and maybe this is a little rhetorical too, in relation to where some existing buildings are because we'd like to keep them or redevelop them and those sorts of things, but then also just kind of responding to what, to a certain extent, is already there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a correction is that the setback gets as narrow as 25 feet near some of the existing buildings. Just, you said 100 feet. Clear it's not a, to the people in the places where it gets narrow again down at the other end as well.
That's right. Yeah, and I think, again, on balance, it's a question of, you know, varying the setback to accommodate the site constraints, things that are already there. You know, we have adaptive reuse provisions for the steam plant and other buildings. And again, it's just trying to respond to the river, the existing conditions and sort of balance that, and at the same time, trying to expand the protected area along the river.
John had a comment?
Yeah, you addressed it somewhat on page six of the rebuttal. It did talk about that the setback would not apply to water-related or water-dependent issues, and you mentioned picnic and potentially bathroom. I think there should be more definition in that, you know, because just to state water-related or water-dependent, I wouldn't have right away thought of picnic or bathroom. So other people, when they look at this, might think of, you know, other things like, I can't think of something now, but let's, as crazy as a business which needs water to run something, water-dependent, so.
For example, a marina or a dock or something like that.
Yeah, so I'm suggesting that you have some sort of listing, so you have, whoever determines this later has some sort of idea of what we were talking about.
I read that in here.
And-
I didn't see it.
To clarify, you know, we've looked at this question, the definition of what is considered water-related and water-dependent with city's legal counsel, looked at some case history, and really felt comfortable that, and what this proposal does is it basically says that the allowed uses proposed in the zoning within the park area are considered or would be allowed as water-related and water-dependent. So that's the connection back to the existing code, and so those uses are described in the code and there is a direct link.
Okay, so there's allowed uses in code.
Yeah, John, page 64 of the final submittal talks about that. It defines water-related and water-dependent and then gives some discussion about what that means.
Yeah, that's, in the written statement, I think that is a helpful reference. They go into that discussion of the statute and the definitions in more detail than the proposed code does.
Steve? Yeah, I just wanted to mention, when I looked at this and even, it still bothers me a little bit, where we take the Greenway setback line and we sort of trace it around the buildings on the north. Yet we don't jog it, you know, obviously you haven't missed Restaurant Row, but you still could have jogged it to catch the northern end of the open space. I'm looking at, say, Figure 9.3135 as well as R1, because you can't really see where the new stuff is. So in other words, when you come, when you come south of the south building, you could have jogged the Greenway, made it a little wider right there, that section there.
Right here?
And also, the only other place that I had a question on is where the Greenway setback gets very narrow again by, by the steam plant. It's out quite a ways in front of the steam plant, and I just didn't see anything in the, you know, there may be, you know, a bunch of stuff there that you can't really move, you know, I, in other words, I didn't see in the record where it was, the reason why it couldn't have been pulled in close, because it comes in close to the substation. I can understand why you might want to have some separation there, you're going to potentially expand that building, but that's also the place right now where the Greenway setback is the narrowest. It's that and essentially along, you know, the existing E-Web building, the two places where it's really narrow. And it seems like there might have been some potential adjustment of the setback.
Right. And so I guess I would suggest the need to look back and take a closer look at what exactly is proposed in that area to determine, is it, does it somehow violate the definition of water-related or dependent? But I would assume that if there are existing structures there, that they would want to encompass that, you know, or actually exclude that from the setback so that there wasn't a question of whether it could remain.
I don't think there's any issue with the structures on the north piece. And right now, all the drawings show the steam plant, you know, there's a fairly large separation between it and the setback. So again, maybe there's some other stuff there on the ground that would affect that. But those are the only two places that I had a little bit of concern on, the Greenway setback.
Jeff's got a comment.
I guess I just want to expand on Mr. Baker's question. I'd like to know specifically why the boundary stays away from the steam plant building perimeter there. There may be a very good reason for it, as Mr. Baker has mentioned. I'd like to know what it is.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. So in the testimony, we did hear also some questions or concerns about geologic stability and the geotechnical analysis requirements and also coordination with other agencies like the Army Corps of Engineers, potential permitting requirements along the river. And I think the applicant's rebuttal does a pretty good job of responding to that. They've identified for you all where there are a number of borings, underground investigations that have occurred over the site over many years. They also point out the existence of the viaduct, the steam plant and other buildings that have been there for quite some time and sort of attempting to show the suitability of the site for redevelopment. They really aren't subject to our standards in the code for geotech analysis, things that would, that you may have, be familiar with that are more related to a specific development proposal. But I do think that there's enough evidence in the record based on staff's evaluation to say that, you know, they've really- to say that, you know, they've really, they've met their obligation under the statewide planning goals to show feasibility there. And in terms of the Army Corps of Engineers, they're, they've also, I think they dug back into the record and located some correspondence back and forth between the design team and the Corps of Engineers. So, they have coordinated with those other agencies early on in the process.
I don't recall that the city's ever required geotechnical analysis at a refinement planning level.
That's correct. So, Commissioner Randall, you asked a little bit about the ecological analysis and the timing of that. And as I understand, the final report in the package of application materials is dated September 2011, and the applicant's rebuttal clarifies that, basically, that's a condensed version of what was reviewed and voted upon by the community advisory team. I don't think that any change occurred between the spring of 2010, when it was voted on, and the final report. It basically just takes out some of the process information, the background that was included in the, in the draft, the earlier draft. So, substantively, I don't think that it changed any. And they also go back and describe some of the history of the different meetings, who attended, and what the votes were, and, so I think they give a pretty good summary of that issue in response to your question from last week.
I did actually look at the meeting minutes and agendas during that period of time, and it did appear that it was on the agenda a number of times during that period. That was my concern mostly, that there was opportunity to respond to that, and it appears that there was in my mind.
You also mentioned the mill race, and wanting to know a little bit more about that.
I think I know where that is, but I just didn't see it on L2 or...
Sure.
One sheet, so...
Sure, and again, it's a question of piecing together the different materials, but I found this depiction, and it's probably the best information from the actual riverfront master plan itself. And what the dotted line shows is the existing pipe location of the mill race where it outfalls to the river. And you can also see the historic location of the mill race overlaying there. And I think you also asked about the mill pond swale, and it's located here.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and so, the way that the proposal in the master plan describes it is that, well, you know, they, I think for a variety of reasons, didn't undertake planning a daylit mill race because of the complexity, the site constraints, the cost, variety of factors, and needing to partner with the university, water rights, I mean, it's a, it would be a complicated undertaking, to say the least. But here, what they've shown is the potential, at least, that it could be reincorporated in the site as a stormwater feature along Eighth, and then in the mill pond swale where it might be resurfaced. The idea was that they didn't want to preclude it, but they're also not required to under the downtown plan or any other provision or policy at this point, so...
Question?
Yeah.
If it were to be daylighted, would it have to be pumped back to the surface in order to be...
I believe that it would. I think it's at 17 feet of depth at this point, and so, I'm no engineer, but I think that, I think that it would, or we would be looking at a pretty deep canyon.
Was that, was that rhetorical, too, John?
No. That was left over from the, when we did an EWEB master plan process several years ago, that this issue was raised, that it's...
And there may be any...
...making a surface feature, it would require expenditure of energy.
Yeah.
I might add a note, and maybe, I worked on this building years ago, so I recall, EWEB has a water right, and they pull water out of the river, or they did at the time for cooling purposes, I don't know if that's still a thing.
We have to be careful there, Steve.
Right, no. I know, but just, the point is that, EWEB, as my recollection is, EWEB's already pulling water, it has a water right, pulling water out of the river, so there would be the potential that you might be able to use that instead of dumping it back in the river. There's a certain potential that that might be a possibility, not to say daylighted, but it wouldn't require additional pumping.
So, at this point, I think I'll turn a little bit to Rick Duncan's comments. Let me find those here. But Commissioner Lettich, as you mentioned, I think, I think much of those were relatively minor details that the staff generally agrees with, things like including the word employment in the purpose statements that describes range of uses allowed in the area. I think, I would like to respond to his comment about the ND policies. He expressed some concern that this might be redundant in applying nodal development principles, but I think this is a good example of what we're moving toward with special area zones as opposed to using the nodal development overlay. You know, back in the early 2000s, we implemented the ND overlay in several areas, and, I mean, the way I think of it is, it's really sort of a restrictive or prohibitive overlay to prevent what we didn't want, you know, to sort of limit development in a way that wouldn't preclude nodal development in the future. What this does is it takes the concept, form-based code concepts, and the nodal development principles to another level as far as, you know, more robust and sophisticated set of standards that accomplishes a better result than the ND overlay. So, it's designated ND in the metro plan. We're not proposing the ND overlay, and so, this is proposed instead of the nodal development overlay standards.
That's where maybe, I think, Rick, I don't know this for sure, but knowing his concerns generally, was that there's, there would be another layer of regulation or requirement superimposed upon the ND policies? And you're saying the ND overlay is not being proposed, so the question becomes, why do we need to reference the policies at all?
It, it's a reference in the purpose statement of the proposed code, and so, it doesn't operate to actually have a, you know, any regulatory authority or invoke those nodal development overlay standards. But it's important, we thought, to help connect the dots, to show that this is an implementation of that concept from the metro plan.
Is it, is it important at all to hang on to that concept to meet the old TEGM requirements or whatever?
I think that it may be, you know...
Transportation Growth Management.
There are some expectations at the state level for what it would accomplish, or at least the hope at the time, to reduce vehicle miles traveled...
Yeah.
And meet the state's transportation planning...
Which this reports to do.
Okay.
I think it's important, it's part of the policy, the consistency with those metro plan policies, to kind of carry that forward. You can't, we can't just kind of, you know, formally kind of disregard the nodal development concepts and strategies that the state was kind of a part of. They're there, and we're saying we have a better way of basically implementing this special area plan.
So, to Rick's concern, somebody wanting to develop something on the property here isn't going to be faced with the special overlay requirements as well as some nodal policies that they have to address.
I read it the same way in Rick's comments, too. I was suspecting that maybe he felt both layers were going to remain.
Right. He also brings up some concerns about the color scheme in the proposed code, and again, I think that's maybe in the realm of things that we can carry forward and work on as it moves forward.
It's the shades of brown.
The, his comments in regards to the lot width standard are well-taken, and we would, we would agree that it really should refer to lot depth. He mentions, again, flexibility regarding the proposed street system. I think I've touched on that through the design review process. We think that the proposal does allow for a fair degree of flexibility. And to his point, yes, it would allow perhaps more streets, or a different location of streets, public or private, and it may or may not require design review. In some cases, if I go back to the street typology here, you can see that there are proposed accessways, and actually, through, through some of these redevelopment parcels, it's quite possible that we would have alleyways or private, private streets that internally serve that block and provide access, rear access, for example, to parking areas or service areas. So, again, that flexibility is there. And to his last point about the open space requirement, I do believe he identified a mistake in the proposed code, and we would like to fix that. It refers to requirement for 10% of livable area to be provided as common open space on the development site. But in effect, well, it's, it's basically, his concern was, well, if you build a, an extremely dense, tall building, is it 10% of the floor area of all of that development? And we didn't intend for that to be the case, and so, we would like to strike the phrase whichever is greater from that proposed code. So, basically, they have to provide 10% of the site area, not all of the floor area for each building, for example. It was a little bit excessive.
Section 2 of the code says now 10% of the livable floor area. It's not the all of floor area. So, we're not talking about parking and other things. That's the way the wording is right now.
But again, it could be, it could be with a relatively tall and dense building that we're talking about a huge amount of common open space. At least, it wasn't the intent in the proposed code that that would be required for perhaps some of the more dense buildings.
So, would it be fair to say that we would never require more than 10% of the building's site to be in open space?
That's my understanding, as far as what our preference would be.
Except that, you know, this is pretty standard language from our other multifamily, we're talking about the multifamily, but not a multi-family, so we're talking about it's only applicable to multifamily developments. So, this is, this allows you to have 50% in like, private open space, balconies, porches, patios, eco roofs. I don't know that there's any reason... The only reason I would be concerned is you could get a fairly small lot, that's, you know, we have so many sites that allow 120 feet, and we're not going to get open space, whereas... Which is obviously what we want, eyes on the street, a lot of other things going on, where I think, in terms of multifamily development, I'm going to say that. So, I would, I would caution just changing that out of the...
It's the either-or issue, is it?
Right. For the benefit of the group, I apologize, I didn't have all of the code language in front of me to start here, but basically, what it says is either 10% of the development site, or 10% of the livable floor area, whichever is greater, shall be provided as common open space on the development site. And so, in the case of an extreme, you know, of a relatively tall building with a lot of livable floor area, what this would require is that they provide that larger number in common open space as opposed to an either-or. You know, and so, one proposal, one suggestion would be to strike the phrase whichever is greater, so they have the option.
And Rick's concern, if it's, if it's 10% of a whole lot of livable space, there just might not be room for that on the development site.
Except, you know, I think he didn't realize that it can be considered private open space, balconies, porches, patios, eco roofs. The point is, you know, you could get, I mean, 10%, you've just put an eco roof on the building, and you've met your 10% requirement necessarily.
Well, I mean, if 50% of 10 floors is livable space, you just max greater than the area of the lot.
It's going to depend on the size of the site.
You'll poke into this.
We will.
Well, again, it's not, yeah.
Well, I guess I was going to jump in and kind of tag on to what John was saying. If you have a multi-story development with more livable space, and you maintain that 10%, then you risk having more open space requirement than you have room for. And I think having the either-or is a good option on it. And I think, you know, again, I know one of my concerns, and I think it's kind of come up, and maybe I'm jumping ahead a little, but that we don't over-regulate things to where we end up with it sitting vacant forever either, because then we've just wasted a whole bunch of time. Just, I'll get that out there.
Jeff Scott?
I guess a concern I have about this is that...
The concern that I have about this is, we are talking about striking whichever is We've got some fairly high structures allowed in parts of this, parts of this area, I think upwards of 120 feet, so we could end up with 10 stories and a lot of livable space. We could make ourselves a very, very dense area here, which is policy, but I'm wondering if it's consistent with the overall goal of this area, in terms of it also becoming an attraction, center for the city. So, I guess I have a concern about just striking that as a solution to the problem.
I appreciate that. It's certainly something that I, I know the design team looked at very closely through this process. You know, one of the things we kept hearing was that, you know, they proposed a significant amount of the area in public park, and that we ought not to forget that, and that it's all part of this balancing act. And staff even questioned that, whether or not on a site-by-site basis, if they ought to be required to provide that, or if it was, I mean, as a, as a larger development site as a whole, they've already achieved some balance with that in terms of accessibility to the park and the river. So, those amenities will be available to residents as well as the larger public. And so, I mean, it's a fair question, though, in terms of what should that number be? What should be the obligation on each individual development site? But we also want to make, make it flexible enough that it's achievable.
Well, yeah, that is a good point, because in other instances where, where we've said, okay, where is the alternative for open space? Here, there is the opportunity for that. So, that's a good point, I think, to consider in this one. John, and then Steve, and then John.
Well, I'm sure we'll get to it later, because Rick also talked about development and phasing and implementation. I happen to live where there were parks designed in the thing that would be available. It's been five years, none have been built. I think, there's nothing to say that all these buildings could go first, and other than, let's just say, the riverfront that's allowed, none of those parks get developed till the end of the phase. So, I have a concern that these people could be living there for years with really nothing available, because that's not mentioned in here, that phasing.
And I just want to mention, again, in the current code, you know, common open spaces doesn't have to be outside, could be a shared space indoors.
Right.
So, again, we're talking about, if you have a 10 or 11-story building, you could imagine that you have a community room in the building, which would make sense, if, you know, so if people want to have a birthday party, they can do it. So, it doesn't mean that we're trying to find a huge amount of space outdoors, it just means that there is some shared open space, some of it, there's, it says here in the current language, it says half of it can be private.
That's right. Right.
It doesn't mean that it's all outdoors. Some of it could be outdoors, and that's why I wasn't concerned about the number, because you'd compensate, in a tall building, you'd compensate by making some public spaces available to the occupants.
And I assume you're going to come back with some thoughts for us, Gabe?
I would just throw in my concern, I think, Matt, this Commissioner Miller, that, you know, an open space shared by all is not the same as a balcony where you can have a party or invite friends.
Again, a fair comment. I think, you know, this is really good discussion for where we, where do we want to land with the code provisions? You know, this is a particular area that, you know, we can focus on some more. Staff really, you know, having looked at this and talked with the design team leading into this, thinks it's a pretty good balance. It's more than in some other areas, is, you know, that might require 20% minimum. You know, it also incorporates a public park as part of the proposal, so we think it strikes a good balance, you know, and I do think that the phrase whichever is greater is troublesome. If we want to look at that balance of is it enough or not on an individual development site, I'd encourage you to look at the percentage rather than, than that question of...
Yeah, but the flip side of that is, if indeed we have a 10-story building, this would infer that the amount of open space necessary would be the same as for a three or four-story building, and that doesn't matter.
That's right. That's right. So, it's a fair policy question for the commission. So, at this point, I think I've walked through some of the initial concerns and questions that you all... that you all passed along, and I guess I'd turn it back to Randy to say, where should we take it from here? We'd like to hear before our next meeting whether there are some particularly major concerns or things that commissioners feel where the proposal might not meet the approval criteria, or there's enough of a significant policy question that we need to deal with that today.
And just to put a little bit of closure on it, Steve had comments that I think generally parallel mine. He indicated, Steve, that you had some specific code issues, and based on our discussion right at the beginning, I trust those are kind of wording issues rather than?
No, both. I have a bunch of marks. Some of them are, they're some of each.
Okay. And do you want to address at all Rick's most recent submittal? He talks about lack, his concern was a lack of financial analysis, indicating that in response to something requested, I think, by the commission earlier, we were given Leland's memos, which were more kind of an economic market analysis rather than a financial analysis. And then Rick's second point was this whole idea of implementing the plan and the timing of improvements and who pays for those and how that gets accommodated.
Yeah, you know, at this point, I think they're, much like the open space discussion, they're fair comments as part of this process, but I, you know, I do struggle to see where they land in terms of the actual approval criteria for the land use applications. They're big questions in terms of the potential success of the future development, both in terms of how it rolls out over time, you know, and the feasibility of individual developers perhaps to pay for certain public improvements. But, you know, I think to that point, I can say that we do expect that there'll be a land division process initially in setting up the redevelopment parcels and the rights of way, and it would be through that process, you know, that we, as a city, would have the opportunity to require certain public improvements of developers. That's not to say that we aren't, you know, as a city, continuing to look to potential partnerships and working with E-Web and future developers that might come forward to find funding solutions for the park, for the various amenities that it requires, for the public improvements. So, it's an open question, but it's not one that I think that they absolutely need to answer in order to meet the approval criteria.
And it's understandable, and Rick is real good and always real conscientious about, is this really going to work or not? But then I, and I can understand his perspective on it, but I think to your point, Gabe, at this stage of the planning process, it's not something that we typically look at. I go back to Walnut Station. That was a land use code kind of reconfiguration, and I don't recall that we talked about how improvements would be facilitated or paid for in that case either, or in any other refinement planning process. I don't recall that we do that at this level. What I always circle back around to, though, is one of my favorite topics, the capital improvement program. And I'm wondering if there have been discussions about how that process now might marry up or integrate with whatever goes forward with the E-Web proposal. Since this is 27 acres and a fairly significant development, have there been discussions with Public Works other than the analysis that they put together about stormwater and sanitary and water lines and so forth?
I guess what I would say is that there have been initial discussions. The Public Works Department has been part of this process from very early on and aware of the potential public improvements, the investments that might be needed. We've explored ideas around potentially using urban renewal funds or other sources that might help to incentivize development, but really no formal decisions have been made. And, I mean, ultimately, those are some decisions I think council would need to make as far as what public contribution would be made there, and I don't know, Steve, if you.
That's what the Leland report talks about, too, local improvement districts, state funding, various sources of funds.
I think we all share Rick's interest and concern about the financial feasibility piece. It's something that obviously we think about. I'm sure most of you are kind of pondering that issue. At the end of the day, for the planning commission, it's really not your obligation to develop any planning strategies. I wouldn't be surprised to see some of that become a little bit more part of the conversation with council, since it's already, you know, who knows how far that will go with council, but I think the part that is relevant for you is what Gabe said earlier, is there are a whole series of land use applications still yet to come for actual development of this site? And within those processes, there are the mechanisms that provide essentially the safety net to ensure some of the public improvements and other things can happen. That's at least one way those things can happen. There may be other ways that are also the time that they change how that occurs, and that could be, you know, city participation in park improvements or other things that could come in the future, who knows? But I think from your standpoint, the land use package you have in front of you also kind of ensures that there will be those mechanisms. So, those issues will have to be dealt with and addressed at the time of development, if not before. So, in that sense, I think that's the part that does connect to your work.
Right.
I don't think that the other issue is about kind of what's the city's role outside of that process really necessarily your obligation or even your purview.
And I think it's probably time to go around the table now and get a sense of where everybody stands on this. We've got an hour remaining yet, or about 40 minutes remaining yet today. And there are, as I look at the submittal, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different land use actions. Amendments to the metro plan, adoption of the downtown riverfront specific area plan, amendments to the Eugene downtown plan, amendments to the riverfront park study, amendments to the land use code to establish downtown riverfront special area zone, rezoning of some 16 properties, removal of the transit development, oriented development overlay from some properties, and approval of a Willamette Greenway permia. And I guess just from a general sense, which were we going with this, folks? I, for one, think that there's just been an extraordinary amount of citizen involvement. What we heard at the planning commission hearing was generally favorable. From my perspective, I think the planning team, the consultants have responded to the objections that we heard very thoroughly. And as I dug into it even further after I submitted my questions to Gabe, I mean, I'm impressed with the level of work that's done here. When I look at what Portland and Salem and Corvallis have all done with their riverfront, how this fits in Vision Eugene, the fact that the E-Web board itself has unanimously agreed that this is what they want to do as the landowner, I'm very favorably disposed the whole bundle. So, that's where I'm at. Steve?
Well, I have specific concerns about some of the wording in the B that I'd welcome, like, go over in detail, because I think the one thing that we haven't really focused on in detail is some of the land use code wording changes to make sure that they don't have unintended side effects or that they are, that's what we really want to do exactly. So, for most of the other land.
How many do you have?
I don't know, probably 20 and a half. Couple in C, but mainly they're in B.
And are they really substantive issues? Or are they the kinds of things that we could give to Gabe and have him consider their, the enormity of them?
Well, and, you know, there's, like I say, there's probably a third of them are word corrections, so that you clarify. But, there's cases, let me, can I give an example? Okay. Let's take the.
What page, John?
I was, I'm on page two of the code, but it really refers to.
Are you looking for the regulating plan? That's page five.
It's the one that shows the overlay zones, which I.
That is page five.
So, yeah, page five. In terms of implementing the plan, it's like, if you look at the MU1. I guess you call it the MU.
Active?
Not active, that's the restaurant row. So, it's MU2, right? The people area. In terms of, it seems arbitrary why it stops on the great street partway. I guess this would be Fifth Avenue. You know, the great street into the site. It goes part of the first big block and then it stops and then it stops and then it, and find it again on a sort of a weird corner of the street. There are no dimensions given, so how would we even put this in code? Because we don't even know, I mean, I don't even know how deep does that go into the site? So, it seems to me that that's a substantive issue that needs to be addressed. You know, to me, it would make, it made more sense if it went all the way along that one block.
Right.
And that we had dimensions there showing, and then they get at the end in the corner, why does it, why is it rectangular, not going all the way to the railroad tracks? You've got a little. You know, just in terms of implementing it and being able to implement it later on, you need some more.
May I should give a chance to respond?
I think you point out some, a particular concern that is fair to raise about what we do when we establish code diagrams. I mean, it's at a level of scale and detail that is difficult to nail down precisely, but that's, in part, that's intentional. And I think that, you know, if there are particular cases where you're concerned that that's not clear enough or rigid enough about exactly how deep does that overlay extend from the street, for example, that it's something that we could have the applicant incorporate on their larger site plan set. In other words, the plan set provides us another tool that would be more specific and could guide future development. But I think it's intentional, and I'd have to go back and really trace, retrace some steps to determine all the reasoning as to why it stops and starts where it does. But, in the case of the people overlay, I think that, you know, that edge where it stops along the proposed great street is because of the viaduct, for example. And at the corner of High, High Street there, again, I think it's responding to some existing conditions and constraints, but, you know, there's a lot to that. And, you know, it's, I think you point out one of the more complex parts of establishing code, you know, trying to strike a balance between flexibility and certainty. And, you know, here we have an illustration in the code that gives a, you know, a sense of where these overlays will exist. The site plans give us more detail and a scale that we could really zoom in on it.
I guess my concern is there's a lot of places where there's text that refers to drawings that, you know, it's sort of like, I mean, that's an example, and I can find some other ones that I think just that we need to nail down a little better, you know, why, you know.
Would it be possible or worthwhile to say that this zone should be not more than or not less than and leave some flexibility, but then define some sideboards?
That would be one way to try to accomplish the same result in text in the code. It may be simpler to depict it on a site plan, but there are ways to approach that.
But if you really want to set maximums and minimums, why not do it so specifically? Would that be your concern, Steve?
Yeah, and, you know, again, if I could, I'll give one more simple example. I have much more substantial ones. But on page six, under the following parks and oaks and spaces uses, and now we're talking about in the SDM, we're talking about in the SDR zone, so it's not in the CL zone, it's just, we prohibit community and neighborhood centers from mixed use zone. So, you know, I understand why we prohibit camping and golf courses and dwellings in the parts of the country, but I don't understand why we would prohibit community and neighborhood centers.
I think that you may have pointed out a good, a good issue to address further in that I think the intent was to limit the potential for a large community center type structure within the CL sub-district within the park. It wasn't necessarily intended to prohibit it throughout the whole mixed-use zone, and so that could be a simple fix.
Right, yeah. Because this applies to the whole zone, it's, you know, it's just, it says that you can't have any of those kind of uses.
Do you have these written down?
Well, they're all marked. I have essentially places marked where I have.
I guess to facilitate the discussion, Steve, if a lot of this is getting down to real specific details, can you share that with Gabe and the team? Because my concern is if we get talking too much in the details here, we're going to get bogged down quite a bit.
That's fine. It seems to me that, you know, what our role is is to make sure we do good code, you know, and so, you know, I can certainly try to write all these up, but other commissioners might have different perspectives on them that, you know.
But it would be worthwhile if we could have responded, reacted to them. I mean, to bring it to the table now.
Well, I'm not bringing it to the table, I was following your example. You said you had a bunch of the issues with code in your email, and you talked about general issues, and then you, in your comments, you had the same thing, you said you.
No, I don't have any code issues.
No, I thought, I mean, your thing that you said had, your email that you sent out initially was the one that I followed as a model.
We've got Bill on the queue here.
I was going to jump back to big-picture comments. And so, I guess overall, as I've looked at this, obviously, I'm an advocate of form-based code, and you probably saw that in Walnut Station, and so, I like that aspect of this. I especially like the build-to and the setbacks coupled with the step-backs as you reach certain heights, just to encourage the density but still allow natural lights and good streets. I think I want to make sure that we're concerned enough that we give the flexibility for density and the economics to get us from A to Z. And I think in looking at this plan, I think it overall has a good chance of doing that. I look at, you know, Randy mentioned this, that we've had a very diverse community group looking at this for a very significant period of time with professional consultants that have had public meetings, chance for public input, and a lot of vetting on what has gone into this. And I know we can, you know, maybe we haven't got all the wording perfect on it, but we've, I think, had the opportunity where we've got a good plan. I think, you know, is it a perfect plan? No. Could it have been done differently? Yeah. But it's a good plan. And I think, you know, in my opinion, I think it's a perfect work. I like the mixing of the densities and the way it steps back up from the river, denser around the viaduct and different aspects of it. And so, I think from a big picture, I really like it. I also just want to put in the plug for the steam plant. I think that's just an awesome building, and as an architect, you know, I've been through that building, and, you know, I think it's good that it's in the plan as some development, because I think it's a significant part of the character of this area. And so, I guess, you know, that's kind of my two cents worth there, and I think it was kind of summarized best for me by Mia Nelson when she testified with Thousand Friends that this strikes a balance. And I think that's where I fall on this, is that it's a good balance. It's not perfect economically, it's not perfect in all aspects, but I think it hits a good balance. And I think in that sense, I'm, I like it.
John?
Let me say, I think the process that we went through as far as E-Web did have a lot of citizen involvement in the development. And I understand that we're not supposed to be considering that, but we're looking at code, which we're told all the time. So, from that perspective, I'll enter into it by saying that I was somewhat displeased at the public hearing, because no one really had comments related to code. They only spoke about the vision and possibly the economic impact analysis or lacking thereof. So, they were talking about a vision that was presented in this packet. When I look at the code and I. When I look at the code and I agree with Commissioner Baker, and I'll submit some direct comments, that the only way we can ensure that the people who supported this because of the vision is that our code reflects something that'll lead to that vision. And if there are some issues with it that won't, or I have a problem with the fact that there are so many adjustments allowed, I agree with flexibility. But I think that that creates an issue because it's unclear, because that may not give the vision that everybody thinks is going to be there from what they saw from the pictures when this project finally comes to conclusion. Not to say that because of other types of conditions over a period of few years, be they financial, econo, whatever occurs, but we should do everything we can with the code to encourage that it comes as close to the vision that they wanted to support. Therefore, getting into the code, I'll try to send some of my specific comments along with Commissioner Baker, that maybe we can discuss at the next meeting, because I think that's really where we can quickly go through that and ensure that, that vision that they supported is as close and supported by the code. One example I had, which gets back to my minimum and maximum heights, it indicates it says on the lot. Well, the only thing I see on lots is on, I guess it's Exhibit A, page 22, it costs, looks at parcelization. So one of my first questions was, well, geez, if I bought parcel eight, which fronts on three streets, does that mean that 50% of that can be one story? Or if I divide that into eight other lots, does it mean that only 50% of each one of those lots can be one story? There are so many things like this that I don't quite understand in that code, and that's why I think we should really look at it closely, because that, that's a huge, those are huge parcelizations. And they're the only ones that I saw in here that went that small. I don't, I couldn't find anything else that said, there's, there's 70 lots here that are all going to be whatever. That's all I had.
Well, okay, and that's, and that's fair. And what I think you and Steve and any other member needs to do is bring specific proposals to the rest of the commission so that we've got time to consider them. And if you want to make specific change proposals for the commission to vote on and send forward as recommendations, that's what we need to do. But, but I don't think it's fair today to sit and try to go through what these ideas might be and try to get our heads around them and make some decision today.
No, I didn't.
No, that's why I say, John, I think, I think your comment about providing something to the rest of the commission in a timely manner so we can digest it, be specific what you want to have changed, and then as a planning commission, we'll have time to figure it out and say whether we agree or not to send it as a recommendation forward, okay?
Just wanted to comment, I'm, I'm not saying it necessarily has to be changed. I'm saying that I had such, also such questions that maybe with the deliberation with the other commissioners, it'll become clear to me why it's fine.
Or perhaps you ought to just ask Gabe, because my understanding is, is that there was a peer review or some process where architects actually tried to apply the code to some scenarios to get an understanding of how things work together?
That's right. It's my understanding that they, they did look to some local consultants who have experience with our development code and they ran some very real projects through, through this.
All the Tate and a few other.
Tate, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly which ones, but.
Total Development.
Crescent Village, I'm hearing.
Was that, was that similar to what we did on Walnut Station? Because I know I was part of a group on Walnut Station where we kind of vetted, vetted the form-based code, had some scenarios for design and would it work, that kind of thing? Was it similar to that, do you know?
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is that they, they looked at the, the proposed code provisions, they looked at these, these very real projects and determined, could they be accomplished or what would the effect be in running through this particular code? You know, to Commissioner Jaworski's question about parcelization, I mean, it's a, it's a fair one, you know, and, and again, it's this question of balance that relates, I think, to Commissioner Baker's concern about the level of scale and detail on a code diagram. The question is sort of, how far do we go in predicting and prescribing the layout of individual lots? Well, we could show any number of scenarios to show a bunch of really small lots or some bigger parcels. This helps to show the framework, but without presupposing the exact outcome. And so I think, you know, it, it may be that there's one parcel that has three frontages. It may be carved up into much smaller parcels, and so the code's written to try to respond to as many of those scenarios as possible and not preclude good design. And so, I mean, that's why it's, you know, not so prescriptive as to delve into every possible detail, so.
Jeff?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to make about three or four, hopefully, brief comments. First, I'd just like to voice my overall for, for this plan. From a land use standpoint, I, I have a few questions of myself at this time, I've had a few and they've been answered through the respondents, responses made by the consultant. And also, I've been educated very much by the questions and responses generated by the other commissioners. As most of you know, I've been out of town for the last few weeks and I'm playing catch-up and I found all the written correspondence to be very helpful. So I look forward to seeing the questions, the comments and suggestions from all the commissioners between now and the next meeting, because I feel like that's, that's the best way to get things aired out. I guess I also wanted to say something about the steam plant. Having spent most of my life working with and around and over steam plants, I'm very interested in seeing that go forward in some, some manner or other. I know one of the, one of the people giving.
At the, at the hearing.
Suggested museum, and I'm, I'd probably be all for that, myself. Finally, I guess the, the biggest concern I have about this is, it's an old saw and it's already been mentioned, and I think Commissioner Duncan put it very well, and that is implementation. The greatest plan, if we don't have an implementation, and we talked about infrastructure, we've talked about capital planning and financing, I think that devil's going to be in the details. And the land use is, is one level of, of approval here, and I'm all for this plan, but I have grave concerns about it from an implementation standpoint. Thank you.
Do you have more thoughts, though, on what ought to happen with the implementation part of it?
Well, I think, I think the key there, Randy, is, part of it is the infrastructure planning and the capital projects. I think that that's, we're going to have to make a place where, where it's going to be, the other part of this that, that I have continued concerns about is, we're only going to get developments when there's an economy to support it. And I have very serious concerns that we're going to have a great plan and no economic engine to drive it, so.
John?
Trying to get up a little bit higher than my usual nitpicking comments. My biggest concern with this plan is, is how does it work with the river? I mean, we obviously are next to a river that's near and dear to us. But there, there are constraints to this site. First of all, it's on the outside bend of a river, therefore it's raised way above the river and it has to be armored in order to not erode. So you're already somewhat removed from the river, so the types of enhancements that you might be able to do across the river and out in Baker Park just really don't make sense, especially given that you've already, the site is already fairly intensely developed. It's also in an area that, that we say we want to provide connection to the river as best we can, and I think this plan does that. It, it, it is constrained by its physical characteristics, and I think the concerns that some folks have said about this should be a more natural plan, I don't think it's feasible nor desirable in this case. Part of that for me is, is the concern about bringing more roads closer to the river, but in this case, I think it makes sense. I'm struck by the fact that in Tomacall Park, they took roads away from the river and got a park. In this case, we're proposing to bring them closer to, and when we looked at this the first time, I was really concerned about that. But I think one of the biggest challenges to this site is how is it going to connect to the rest of the city? Right now, E-Web just sort of seems locked into its own area and it's not easy to get there. And I think these roads will make that possible, so I think they're necessary as well. To me, the biggest challenge in creating a plan is making sure it's doable and that it reflects the vision. And I think that's the line we're trying to walk here, is that we don't make it so restrictive that it can't be achieved, we've had experiences of that. But we also want to make sure we have language in there that what we're saying we want to see is actually what we end up with. I mean, I'm still struck by the idea that, or the reality, that we developed a plan to put a grocery store somewhere and we ended up with medical office buildings. Clearly, we can make mistakes. I think we've come a long way in our wisdom to hopefully get a better chance of succeeding what we've got. So I think this tweaking that we will do between now and then, I look forward to hearing your concerns and hopefully will throw into my own, that we just need to figure out how to make this a reality. So I think we're headed in the right direction, and I think the site sort of dictates how we got into here.
So, we're looking at March 4th, two weeks from, almost two weeks from today, and really the sooner that, where the commission can lay out proposed, proposed motions, the sooner the better for the rest of us so we can give that consideration. Have to caution ourselves not to deliberate via email, so it really just needs to be, at the next meeting, I like us to consider changing code XYZ to say this. John?
So if we, so we should be sending this to Gabe, is what you're saying?
MCC. MCC, everybody else.
But you just said not to.
Not to deliberate.
Not to respond, not to respond via emails.
Emails, yeah. Just say, here's my proposal, and leave it at that.
Maybe a couple of suggestions in how we do that, too. You know, what I heard comments around the table on, primarily, we're dealing with, I think, what's the right kind of level to be focused on in that building, making sure, as John was saying, how this plan carries out that vision and making sure you feel comfortable with that. And there's different levels of detail that comes with that territory. And I think looking at those fundamental pieces of it, and John, you've mentioned a couple, I think, that are fair, fair game to talk through a little bit more in terms of just the level of detail we want to have in the plan, or how much flexibility we want to leave on the table to, to account for kind of some of the realities. Those are, those are good pieces of, of discussion I think you need to kind of settle on, and those could be the kind of things that motions are made of. But I also think there are probably a lot of smaller clarifications, questions, details that I'm guessing, maybe from John, I think Commissioner Baker definitely sounds like he has some more on that level. One way to maybe help facilitate that, too, Gabe could meet individually with those that have those kind of questions to kind of walk through this, because some of those may just be a matter of answering issues or understanding the intent of a code section, or maybe it's a simple error that's been discovered that we can correct and move on forward. I don't think that needs to be something that's, you spend a lot of time on, on the fourth. So I wouldn't, it's good to get the questions out there, but if we can help resolve, you know, half of those or 80% of those with just simple conversation, I'd like to be able to try to do that.
And I think you might see that as the emails come in.
So we'd at least offer that up for individuals if they want to meet with Gabe to kind of walk through that in more detail, if that's easier than trying to do that in an email.
Or even a phone conversation, you know, if we're walking through and clarifying certain things that might lead toward what you want to communicate to the larger group as a potential motion, then we'd be glad to help with that.
But for the larger issues, where you are kind of fundamentally pushing on a policy question, like just that right balance point of what this code either structurally looks like or where that, where it's trying to strike a balance on flexibility or certainty, those are the things I think you should be prepared to come back with and talk about as potential motions. What particular areas of the code do you want to change? You don't have to have code language stuff, so don't be wrong. I'm not suggesting you have to actually have code section citations and all of that. It's just more fundamentally, if you feel that there should be more specificity in the, the diagrams themselves and providing certainty with exact boundaries of where those subareas should be, that's what you would say. These will be concepts that are forwarded on to the council.
Or, or for example, you know, adjustments that are, flexibility that's proposed under the code at this point that, you know, Commissioner Jaworski might, might take issue with or feel that they, you know, that, that it needs to be perhaps more rigid. Those are the, the kind of things that we'd like to, to get to in terms of, of your discussion and action for the next meeting.
Fair enough, John.
Yeah, I have one, it's a general thing, it relates. One of the scenarios you did mention was Crescent Village, and I lived there, five and a half years, and when we went there, it had all the design criteria and all the vision of what it was to be. And as time went on, through adjustment review processes, the design criteria was changed and the individuals who bought in there, let's just say that investment was not what they wanted, and even though they objected to it, they, it just happened, let's just say it was approved. In this particular case, you have a vision, the investment is the Hall of Eugene through the city council, putting their money into there. And so my concern is, is, again, you know, will, will it end up, after all that can go through with the code, to be what's envisioned? And, and therefore, one of my general questions is, I'm not an expert on form-based code, but in it, there's a lot of times that they mention design criteria. And, and I'm kind of confused because I know design criteria was what was changed in Crescent Village that altered the whole vision, where in a form-based code, design criteria, I'm, I'm confused. Is that part that can be changed since it's now part of the code? Because they didn't change the code, they just changed the design criteria. But now, it seems like the design criteria is the way the code is being written, and I'm confused. So that's a question.
Yeah. So I, I think I can respond to that. Really, the way I understand it, the design criteria are, they stem from the Riverfront Master Plan, and those have been included in the specific area plan that's being, you know, that's proposed for adoption. The code has been established with form-based standards that provide two paths. One is clear and objective, and it would establish standards that have to be met in terms of height, setback, et cetera. You know, whether it's building articulation, or those details are set out in the code. And so in order to, to implement that and honor that vision, one way to do it is to meet those clear and objective standards. The alternative is through design review, that those design criteria are invoked as an alternative path away for an applicant to request flexibility from particular clear and objective standards, but using the criteria from the plan to make sure the vision is still honored. And so, really, I think that, you know, design review criteria are a part of what ought to be considered by the planning commission and making sure that it carries forward that intent to the best of our ability.
Would that imply, then, since the code and the design criteria, which is part of the plan, are interrelated, that we should also be reviewing the plan? I'm, you said we can't review the plan, we're only supposed to review code.
I think that, that it is fair discussion as part of the proposed code, that, you know, we have approval criteria for design review that relate back to the policies from that plan. There is a condensed version of the Riverfront Master Plan that's called a specific area plan here. It's part of the adoption package. What we've encouraged you to focus on, really, given your expertise and involvement with code language and developing that, is, is really to make, make sure that the tools will implement that vision.
We have essentially a proposal by a landowner to do a certain site plan that has been reviewed extensively by Citizens Advisory Committee. So for us now, it's to see if there, if it complies with state goals and guidelines, with metro plan policy, with other code provisions. That's what I see our function. If we try to rewind this thing or unwind it, go back to, to the vision, to go back to second guessing what the, what the citizens group did, what all the consultants did, what the architectural group that did the peer review did, we start unraveling this thing and it will just continue to unravel. So this, what I suggest is, every member of the commission, if you have a proposal, bring that to the rest of the commission as early as you can. That'll be a point of departure for our discussion next time. Steve?
I think, I think, I'm, I'm fine with sending in my proposed wording changes and I will separate them out. Again, I think one of the points I want to support from Commissioner Jaworski is it's, there's some confusion in my mind from reading the code, because we allow this design review process, that's aside from the clear and objective. But then on top of that, we allow adjustment reviews for pretty much everything, it seems like everything has a, or many things have the ability, you can't adjust heights. You know, there's this general wording in, in the end here about adjustment reviews that I was confused about.
Can you direct me to that language?
Yeah, I could probably pull you up with that language.
Part of that confusion might be simply the terminology, because we are wrapping the design review approval criteria into what's. the design review approval criteria into what's already known as the downtown adjustment review criteria. You may be familiar with that, it came through the commission a couple of years ago, where we looked at those criteria and actually revamped them, specific to all properties within the downtown plan area. So, there may be just that confusion about terminology, that when we talk about design review for the E-Web site, in part, we're looking at the adjustment review criteria for downtown.
Well, that might be the clarification, it's 9.8030 on page three in the-
Yeah, so what you're probably referring to is a code amendment, which basically embeds the policies from the E-Web plan into the downtown adjustment criteria. It gives us the regulatory tool to say, no, in addition to these things that we look at normally in downtown, you also have to look at the policy direction from the E-Web plan. So, it combines those two things to try to provide a really robust set of discretionary criteria, so.
What this really means is the design review, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think what Gabe says, that's where the criteria was.
Right.
What I'm hearing is that it adds to, not takes away from.
That's correct. Yeah, what it does is it adds the, for example, when it comes to streets, we would look to the infrastructure policies in the E-Web plan, in the specific area plan, in addition to everything else we look at in downtown. Is it an equal to or better than design, how does it relate to the streetscape, I mean, those criteria are already set out in the code, so.
If it makes sense at all, clarify by adding the word based on design review, so it would be clear, clear?
Specific, yeah, if that's a specific word change, you could, you could add it to your comments.
Again, because I just, you know, this person reading this three years from now may not have our history, and so may not fully understand what's going on.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely, that's fine. Any other comments on this agenda item? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item three, items from staff and the commission.
We do have one item with the meeting next week on the remand of AT&amp;T on February. Commissioner Jaworski has requested to recuse himself, and I'll let him speak, we just need to do that on the record, so we can save him coming to the meeting in a minute to decide.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, our bylaws require members of the planning commission, whenever there's a request for recusal or abstention, has to take the advice of the regular plan. So, John, you go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make notice to the planning commission that regarding the AT&amp;T cell tower remand, I must recuse myself from that, because at a public hearing on this issue held on June 15th of 2011, I testified as president of the Calhoun Neighborhood Association on a position taken by the association regarding this, so therefore, I wish to recuse myself from this.
Any objection to that? Anything else from staff?
Other items, we all know we have a retreat coming up next week, on Tuesday, the 20-
26.
26. We'll be sent, we'll be finalizing and sending out the agenda later this week. It will be over in the Woolworth Building, which is the new building over on Willamette Street, and it, Human Resources occupies that second floor, and they have this big multi-purpose room that people work off of, so we'll give you an address so you can find it.
Woolworth Building?
Carolyn, it's the same area where we have the webinar, I assume?
Uh-
West side or east side?
I pretend that it is on the east side of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, the larger one. Is that it?
It's at the other end of that hall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other item is-
Are we going to be getting some kind of a questionnaire to fill out ahead of time?
Yes, you will. You can expect a style profile from Gary shortly, this week, so. It'll be fun. Another item, you, the planning commission, will be invited to a presentation that is coming up on February 28th, which is also next week. The email invitation hasn't gone out yet, so I just thought I'd mention to you, kind of in a save the date kind of mode. This is part of the scenario planning efforts that the House bill kind of prescribed, correct? 2001, the greenhouse gas reduction, and looking at scenario planning. That work is underway as part of the Central Lane MPO, and there is a kind of kickoff presentation by a gentleman named Robert Groh, who is part of Envision Utah, which is a large kind of envisioning scenario planning process that was very, very, very successful, and he's making presentations around the country to help support scenario planning efforts, and coming to Eugene on February 28th. And the planning commission is invited to the 1:30 session that will be over at the LCC Downtown Campus. So, again, you'll be getting an email notification, but just since it's, we're running short on time, I wanted to mention that, in case you have an interest, you can pencil it out on your calendar. And the city council will also be invited to that, as will the sustainability.
Any updates on the planning actions?
On what?
Planning actions, farm animal.
Oh, yes, oh, thank you.
I'll jump in here, if that helps, on the good pasture, I call it, land use application process, you've seen several of the cases come before you, and Steve Oaks was helpful in putting a little summary together for me. So, I think you last looked at the Willamette Greenway permit on remand, and at this point, that, your decision's been appealed back to Luba, they haven't heard it yet, but we assume we'll see briefs going back from both sides, and we'll, of course, let you know what the outcome is, and whether it's coming back to the commission or not. But otherwise, they, at this point, their tentative PUD with a zone change and a traffic impact analysis combined is approved and affirmed, so they've achieved that first fundamental step, and that's having exhausted all the appeals, all the way to Court of Appeals and back. And, but there is one other remand that's back before the city, it has to do with their final PUD approval and tentative subdivision, which was a combined application, so it's the second step of their PUD process. You haven't seen that, because it's a type two planning director decision that on appeal would go to hearings official, that was remanded, handed back to the city, it'd be last year at this point, and we held a public hearing, received evidence from both parties, and reaffirmed, our hearings official reaffirmed that decision. It went back to Luba, and they found that there was still one more error with regard to the geotech, the geologic analysis as it related to the public streets. And so, they're pushing it back to the city for us to look again at this question of, under the criteria of whether it is a hazard to public health and safety in that context. So, we're getting there, I think, you know, as you can see, the issues get narrower and narrower as we move along, but it's unclear whether the Greenway permit may come back to you again. The saga continues.
And regarding some of the code amendments, two have gone to council, one being the downtown ND overlay code amendment, and council did approve that last week. They went ahead and applied it to all five of the properties with that ND overlay, not just the, the community credit union site. Regarding farm animals, they will actually, they're scheduled to take action tomorrow, but they did deliberate a bit last week, they made, I'm going to have to clarify this with you in an email, but I believe they made two changes to your recommendation. One was that they upped the number of goats from two to three, and they upped the number of hives, I believe, from two to three. And I believe those are the only two changes, but-
Still just two categories of animals?
Still two categories, that was questioned, and it was brought to a vote, and they decided to stick with the limitation on the two categories that you had recommended.
The recommendation that went forward did take the other fowl category away from the rabbits and put the other fowl with chickens?
Yes, I think it went to the council in that fashion, I think we actually revised the ordinance to do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, with the nodal development approval by properties, did you mean all the other nodal development overlay areas also can now have drive-throughs, is that-
Correct.
Only in the downtown?
Just those five.
Oh, okay, that's what I asked.
There were only five individual properties.
In the downtown area only, okay, just wanted to make sure about what you were saying. Okay.
We'll all go over to your house, drive-through for coffee.
Yeah, that's-
Anything else, Carolyn? Steve?
Curious as to where the Deerbrook appeal is.
Right, so at this point, it has been appealed by the southeast neighbors to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and it's my understanding that they're in the process of sorting out what exactly is in the record, and there are objections going back and forth about particular items, and the attorneys are working that out before it goes forward for any, the briefings and oral arguments at Luba. So, it's early yet in that process, I would say.
Other comments?
Our next meeting is Monday, February 25th. The agenda items are-
Just the AT&amp;T again.
Just the AT&amp;T, just the AT&amp;T.
Yeah, just that, just that. But our hope is that we'll leave that meeting with direction from you as to where we're going with the final order, and then we might be coming back on March 4th, the same day as the E-Web discussion, to wrap up the final order. So, we'll do that first, and then we jump into-
Are we on a timeline with the AT&amp;T piece?
Yes.
We do need to take action on the report, then?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anything else from members of the commission? Okay, then, we adjourn.